Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025. Roll call.
Chairperson Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Pragchuknik?
Here.
Commissioner Petrangilo?
Here.
Commissioner Corholios?
I am here.
Let the record also show that Ex-Officio Pat Green, Tina Glad are in attendance as well as our City Administrator Greg Prozinski. Number two, approval of the minutes, approval of the Planning Commission minutes for March 3rd, 2025. No corrections, additions, or deletions if any.
So approved.
I would second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes. Note any additions, deletions, or changes if any, and I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a subdivision plot exemption request of Hugh Hardy, 2035 Fifth Avenue West, Hibbing, Minnesota, on behalf of owner SLLC Regulation Railroad Authority 111, Station 44, Road Evelyn, Minnesota 55734, in the I-2 General Industry District, and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances on the subject property, parcel ID number 140-0290-0037. Staff report.
Chair. The owner is proposing to divide one lot into three lots parcels. The reason for the request is to sell two separate parcels to the neighboring property owner. On your map, lots B and C located on the new survey will be sold and adjoined to Hugh Hardy existing property. There will be no extension of utilities required. Both parcels will meet minimum requirements for the zoning district when joined with the Hardy property. This request meets the conditions for a plot exemption in the I-2 zoning district, and a legal description of the property has been submitted to this office for legal recording of the parcels. No conditions recommended at this time. The applicant is in the audience. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hugh Hardy, 2035 Fifth Avenue West, Hibbing, Minnesota.
Okay, well, you want to just give us a brief overview of what you're doing here?
I'm just gonna build a fence on that property. I'm gonna buy or bought the property, and I'm gonna build a fence on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Would you say again?
I'm gonna build a fence across the property to the neighboring house.
It also states here you're gonna buy these other two lots basically to square your lot up.
Yeah, pretty much, just to join it all, yeah.
Yeah, because yours kind of jog back and forth there in the back, so it was to make it all nice and even, it looks like, so.
Yeah.
Any questions for anybody?
Don't look at me, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time on this.
I'd make a motion to approve this.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Council meeting is Wednesday, the 16th, at 5:00 p.m., so you'd wanna be there if your attendants too, in case they happen to have any questions for you. We'll move on to them for final approval. Okay, next up is convening the public hearing scheduled for this time to review the sale of real property by the City of Hibbing, 401 East 21st Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, in the A-1 Agriculture District, and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances on the subject property, parcel ID number 141-0040-02320. Staff report.
Chair, the City of Hibbing is requesting to sell their property, 40 acres on Gus Erickson Road. This property was a gravel pit and gravel has been depleted. At this time, the city has no purpose in keeping the property, and SBS Saban Brothers has a use for the gravel pit as a laydown area for material to be crushed and used as material for their blacktop operation they own. The property does have a conditional use, which will transfer to a new owner for a gravel pit. And since zoning allows gravel pits for this area, it follows the City of Hibbing comprehensive plan. The city has met requirements for the sale of real property, and it is looking for recommended approval for the sale from the Planning Commission at this time. City Administrator is here as an applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Or our city attorney.
City Attorney, okay.
Chair, members of the commission. So, because we have a comprehensive plan in Hibbing, all sales and/or purchases, unless the council waves it, need to go through the Planning Commission for consideration. That's why it's here before you this evening is to make sure that it's in coordination with our comprehensive plan. That's why the request came for the Planning Commission to consider. Per Mr. Green's beliefs, it does comply with the planning, the comprehensive plan, so if you don't have any other questions, but that's why it's before you if you had a question about that at all. And I'll stand for any questions you might have otherwise.
This was a pit before, so now it's not used anymore, so I understand Sabans are going to take it from the other pit and just bring it up to, for, so they don't have to go back and forth. I presume that's what it's about.
That's my understanding. I haven't spoken to SBS directly. I've just been working with their attorney on the purchase.
Well, I have, so I do know that, so it's not, I just didn't understand why the commerce, the, it was a pit, so all you're doing is doing the land transfer. That's the only thing they have to do is pay for the land. They don't have to do anything else after that.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get clear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time.
I'd make a motion and we approve this.
I'll second that. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, any open discussion? The only thing I have, I guess, is being, it's gonna be the last meeting. We have some new commissioners coming in. I'd just like to thank the people who are serving on the Planning Commission now that are no longer gonna be here in the future, which is John and Dimitri, and thank you for your service. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve with you gentlemen as commissioners of Ex-Officio Pat Green and Tina Glad as well. Thank you very much for everything throughout the years. It's been an absolute honor in my lifetime serving my community in this room, so thank you.
Do I have to say something? I've been here long enough. Is that's what I'm gonna say. That's the reason why I didn't reapply. I was always wanted somebody different. We needed, we needed to change. I've been here 18 years, so I thought it was time that we got some new blood in here, and obviously we are getting some new blood, and I do like that idea. And that was the reason why I did not apply again, because I wanted, I've been wanting to get on for a whole lot, so, and it has been. I mean, it's, it's actually been fun, to be honest with you, but I did think that it's time for some new people up here. That's all I have to say.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so on behalf of the Hibbing City Council, John and Dimitri, thank you so much for your service. It's greatly appreciated. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but certainly it's a key element of what we do in municipal government, so thank you so much for your service and welcome to the new members as they come on board. So thank you so much.
The meetings might be shorter now because I talk too much.
Do we have any other open discussion?
I would move to close.
You got a motion?
I'll second.
Motion seconded and adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Okay, we're gonna start the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for Monday, April 7th. Call of order, roll call.
Chairperson Pragchuknik?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Petrangilo?
Here.
Commissioner Corholios?
Here.
Let also reflect that Pat Green and Tina Glad are in attendance, and I see the City Administrator just stepped out, so he is absent. Approval of the Board Minutes and Appeals Minutes for July 22nd, 2024. No corrections, additions, or deletions if any.
I'll move the minutes. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Trying to take notes a little bit here, too. Acceptance of the agenda, acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes. Note any additions, deletions, or changes if any.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
New business. Convene a public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a variance request of Mark Anderson, 418 East 21st Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, to vary the maximum lot coverage allowable from 2852 square feet to 3072 square feet for the construction of a new 24-by-26 detached garage in the R2 1-4 Family Residence District, in the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances on the subject property, 418 East 21st Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, 55746, Lot 10, Block 16, Central addition to Hibbing. Is the applicant, is there a staff report? And a letter. Read the letter for the record, okay. Troy A. Loeb, 404 East 21st Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, wrote in a letter to the City Planning Commission and Adjustments. Subject board of adjustments and appeal, public hearing for the variance request of Mark Anderson, 418 East 22nd Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, 55746. Dear Planning Commission, I live on the same block as Mr. Anderson and wholeheartedly support his request for variance. His current garage is many decades old and in need of repair or replacement. Two, that the garage is many decades old and poorly accommodates modern vehicles. He should be granted his request variance to increase the size of the structure. Two, I request the City Hibbing repair the steam pipes that run near or beneath the existing garage. Steam has been streaming from this side of that garage almost continually for many years. I am certain that the escaping steam has added to his need to repair or replace the structure. If left unchecked, Mr. Anderson's new garage will surely receive damage. Sincerely, Troy A. Loeb. So that's his letter.
I think Ms. Anderson ought to be talking to the public utilities, the city, and if he's gonna build a garage, he should get that taken care of before he builds the garage. You know, I mean, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's the PUC that would take care of that, so I think he, that's, that's his responsibility. That's not our responsibility here.
Correct.
So I just wanna put that on record that it's not our responsibility. It's his responsibility to take care of that. I'd like that noted.
Okay, staff report?
Chair, the applicant in this case is requesting a variance to the maximum lot coverage for structures in the R2 zoning district. Maximum coverage is 40% of your lot area, and with their lot size, that would be 2,852 square feet could be covered by buildings. The applicant is requesting to increase to 3,017 square feet of lot coverage to build a new garage that measures 26 by 24 foot. The applicant has shown the practical difficulty and reasons for this request, which include the lot size, house structure size, and still be able to build a two-stall garage on that property. The new garage will meet the minimum setpacks for the zoning district. No conditions at this time. The applicant is in the audience. I'll turn it back to you.
Could we please have the applicant step forward and state his name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you. Mark Anderson, 418 East 21st Street, literally your neighbor right across the street here. And, yeah, I would like to, what we wanna do is build a little bit larger garage because our, when, when this garage was built, at the same time of the house, it's very small, and so we, yeah, to get a modern-sized car, modern-sized car in there is almost impossible. And we do have like a post that's in the center of this garage that's basically holding the structure up, and so we would like to replace that at the same site with the correct offsets and so forth. And the only thing that, the reason why, like you said, that I have a variance is because the total coverage of both the, our house and the garage is, is larger than the R2 areas is calling for. So we're basically asking for another 165 square feet for our garage. And I wasn't, I wasn't clear, I guess, about Troy, our neighbor, what he was saying. Was he for or against, or, oh, there was a problem perhaps? I don't know.
No, they just send out letters to everybody around your, within your area. I don't know. I mean, Tina can tell you that.
No, Troy was, he was in support of your garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
He just mentioned that there's an issue with steam pipes under your garage, and that's what Commissioner Petrangilo was talking about, that that's an issue between you and the PUC, not this board.
Right.
And there are copies of the.
And the steam is dead, you know, we're not, it's not even.
There are copies of the letter right there for you as well, if you'd like to have one.
Okay.
Is there problems there?
What's that?
Is there problems under the garage? The steam?
No, because it's, 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 it's cut off at the alley.
Yeah.
And so there's, there's no steam coming to our house. We have water boiler heat, so it shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue.
Could've been in the past a little too.
Well, it could've been in the past maybe, yeah. Well, you should check it anyhow, just to make sure.
We will definitely check.
I would definitely, before you go to building something there.
I've got an expert who's very good, and he's, he's done work in the city here.
Sure.
So we'd make sure that everything's.
Yeah.
It's good.
I mean, you don't want you building a garage and have that something happen. We gotta dig it up or something, so.
But, I mean, if anybody ever hit it, it would be like, there'd be nothing, because there's no steam in the pipe at all. It's dead, yeah. It's been capped off.
Any other commissioners have any questions for this gentleman?
Nothing for me.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for or against it? You can, you can have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion and we approve it.
We gotta go through the.
Oh, man. Finding out facts, yes. How could we forget that?
You're gonna wanna have him read the responses.
What's that?
Chair, you're gonna wanna have Mr. Anderson reading his responses.
Mr. Anderson, could you please come back up to the podium?
Yeah.
They're gonna have you, would you?
Yes, is this here?
Yeah, they're gonna read them.
Yes, number one, I desire to build a garage larger than the zoning permit, permits, and the plight basically is 1920 is built, and so.
Excuse me. I'm chair.
Chair. So number one, the property owner.
Number, yeah, we'll go through one, two, and three.
Okay.
And then you can.
You'll say your answer.
Okay.
So the property owner, number one, the property owner proposes to use this property in a reasonable manner and not permitted by the zoning ordinance evidence that is explained how, and your answer is?
Yeah, desire to build a garage larger than the R2 zoning permits at this time.
Two, the plight to the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. Evidence that is explained and why?
Yeah, again, the, the original size of the house and garage were there when we bought it, and there's, there's really nothing that we could do about that. And, and again, we've got, the garage is really dilapidating, and so we're, we're trying to get something a little bit larger and be able to park a car.
I would agree with that.
The variance is, if granted, will not alter the essential characteristics, locality evidence. This is how is it explained?
Yeah, and it's, as I say, there's a long that alleyway that's in the back. There are several other garages, and, you know, the new garage would comply with all the current offset regulations, and there, like, again, there's several garages along that, so it wouldn't really change anything as far as what, what is there already.
I would agree with that as well.
Just building a little bit bigger one, so you get two-stall garage.
So you could get a car that's not built in 1920 inside.
Yeah. And the, the one other note here is that the, the garage, you know, the offset is actually larger than, you know, than the five foot needed, but we have actually kind of like a driveway that goes through, and we'd like to create a little bit more space there so we can actually get maybe a trailer or something through there to the alleyway.
Any commissioners have any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
You're not?
Yes.
I will make a motion and we approve this.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And this does not have to go to the council chair?
This does not have to go to council.
No, Board of Adjustments.
So start building tomorrow.
There is the valid for six months on the building permit? Is that correct, Pat?
It's right on the finding effect, yeah.
Yeah.
Six, six months to, once you apply for the building permit and it's continuous as long as the worst does not stop for six months ago.
Okay. Any other open discussion? Pat, I gotta get another question for you on, like, a situation like this. Is there an actual percentage base that people can't cover their lot with larger garage, and is that at 40% right now? Is that a general, kind of a general rule?
Well, you have maximum lot coverage is, is one ordinance for different zones. It doesn't matter that, like, his, the garage he's building, he could build much bigger, but if he wanted, if he had enough room.
Right.
So maximum lot coverage includes your house, sheds, all accessory structures. Every zone, depending on the lot size, has maximum accessory structure square footage, so.
So there's different, there's different things, so, yeah, he's, he's got the maximum structure coverage, which is what he's dealing with, but he's got lots of room as far as square footage for a garage, but not with his maximum coverage.
Gotcha.
I mean, we have approved them when they have been a little bit, oh, if we add like rain gutters and things like that, so if the neighbors next door, I mean, I've always been one on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if you're gonna be setting it closed and, you know, you got your neighbor, you don't want that running onto your neighbor's properties, I've always made sure that we wanted to have rain gutters, so, and, you know, unless, you know, usually the neighbor will come, that's.
And he had no problem meeting the setbacks here.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, yes, you're right.
I know, I was, the reason why I was asking is there something we could maybe do in the future, so on the building side of things, to approve like a 45% coverage, if that would help, you know, as long as they can stay within the minimum setbacks.
Well, in, actually, our lot coverage is sort of goes with the comprehensive plan, so R2, R1, you can, you have usually larger lots, but you can only cover 35%. R2, R3 gets your, into your multifamily, and we make it higher, or the city has higher density, so you can cover more of the lot. So it sort of fits that comprehensive plan for higher density and single-family dwellings only, and your R1, which is, we have a minimum larger lot size for that. So you can build a bigger garage with, you know, on the R1, if you have the lot size. So everything goes by lot size, coverage, and then what zone you're in.
Okay.
So our tables that we have in the office, we, you know, our first step is to find out where you're zoned, then how big your lot is, then how much structure you can build.
Yeah, I was just kinda trying to.
We haven't had many variances for lot coverage, but he has a small corner lot, large house, and, you know, that's pretty nor, small size actually for a two-stall garage.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of these have actually been on 25-foot lots, but it just happens to be that his house is built along, well, and they happen to build a very large house on the property.
Yeah.
Which limited his coverage.
Right. Any other discussion?
We do all the hard work before it comes to you.
Yeah, I was just kinda wondering if maybe.
Tina does all the hard work before it comes to us.
I said, we, anyway.
I was just wondering if, you know, if we took the percent.
We can, yep, from any commissioner, we can, if, we, if you come to our office, request, we have all the papers, you know, I think our different zones and max, and coverage would be great for all commissioners.
Well, you got a lot.
John has known a lot of this in the past, and Gordon.
Right.
With new commissioners, we're gonna try to make, you know, a template of important items that they might have questions.
Can I say the last one, though?
Sure.
Please let's adjourn. All in favor?
I second that.
Aye.
Aye.